Good evening. My name is Lois Spence, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is July 28th, and the time 2021, and the time is 7:07. I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's remote meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Lois Spence, by Sharon Sekulter. Jim Stewart.
Present.
He's a soil scientist and an engineer.
We'll help down and start his meeting. Someone will say hello.
Our inland wetland agent.
Say hello.
Joe Chapman.
Hello, Daddy.
Is Joe here?
Uh, I have to call.
Joe's not here to be here. Okay.
He will be here in a moment.
Okay. Donna Szysinski, office manager.
Here.
I'm sorry, I skipped a line. Clark Dingras, commissioner.
Here.
Ross Mastoraco is absent this evening. BJ Hall.
Here.
Sarah Stroud, our recording secretary.
Present.
I did say you, right, Donna? Donna Szysinski, your office manager.
Yes, you did.
So well organized, I am. And our special counsel, Vin Marino.
Yes, and our chairman has rejoined us.
And our chairman, Keith Romano. Okay, Keith, take it away.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Go through the whole opening? No, we just started.
No, just a, just a roll call.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Meeting Procedure. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which, and after which, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I'd like to ask that the applicants to keep the presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments or questions direct in a time when the three minutes may be opposed. It's not necessary the applicant to respond, but generally in their best interest to do so, there will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting files are published unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes. So we do have the addition of... Hold on one moment here.
So I got a quick question. I had another agenda emailed to me. I mean, not emailed, mailed to me. I got it today.
Yes, that's the agenda you should use.
Okay, I gotta go get it.
So, um, under item D, Application Hearing Determinations, we have to, I would like to add IWC-2021-11, and it is 10 and 36 Main Street. It's an excavation and fill permit to prepare property for future site development. Um, and then, let's see, I think under...
Mine were in my other study.
Okay, um, and then I think under General Discussion or Other Business, we wanted to add, um, 7182 Main Street, which I think is for Main Street, actually. It's several Main Streets. Is that correct? Because I think Lois or BJ, somebody wanted to discuss that? Yes? Okay. All right, so that's it, just those two things.
Just recap those for me real quick.
I'm sorry, uh, under item D, Application Hearing Determination, I wanted the addition of one more new application, and it's 4 and 10 Main Street, and it's an excavation and fill permit to prepare the property for future site development.
It's not 10 and 36 Main Street?
What did I say? Yeah, 10 and 36.
Yeah, okay.
Something different, I apologize.
Sorry, we get it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, and the other one, what was the second one again?
Um, I think it was 4 Main Street that there was some, um, 7182 Main Street and 4 Main Street, some discussion. It was just under, like...
Other?
Yes, other.
Okay, so that's in there, but it's other, it says 4 Main Street, but also probably means 7182.
Right, well, there's a bond release request, and then there's a discussion that needs to happen under, um, other, you can do item 11 under discussion, okay?
Okay.
That's what I meant by that.
Donna, were we going to discuss 101, 11, Barn Hill? Barn Hill Road? They withdrew?
We can, yes, absolutely. We can add that to the agenda.
Didn't they withdraw? Talking about the nursery? Yes, there's been, there's been a little continuing information on that.
Yes.
Was that 101 or 163?
It's actually, uh, Joe clarified, and it's 101 Barn Hill. I know you were, we were referencing 163, but the property that had the work done on it was 101.
Right.
Okay, okay.
There are adjoining properties.
Yes.
Okay. So now we're at general public participation. This is a period of time reserved for the public. If they want to address the commission for any topic of a general nature regarding inlands and wetlands, and it's something that will not, that is not currently in front of us or will be in front of us in the near future. Now is the time to unmute and speak. All right, doesn't look like anyway. Okay, so now I want to be regulated activities. Um, just, I may jump around a little bit because I I probably don't have a long night for me. So I may go to the stuff that I feel most important to be here for and then table some things till later. So don't be surprised, I'll let you know now. Okay? Okay, so, subdivision report recommendations, P and Z, none, regular meeting, no, no public, but none. Public hearing, IWC 2021-045, Victoria Drive, Boza Hologic Field, Building and Parking.
Okay, you should have received in your packet. We did get a letter of withdrawal for that. So that application has been withdrawn.
Okay, that's what I thought. Good. All right, enforcement, NOV discussion, none, remediation submissions, none. Application Hearing Determination. IWC 2021-09, 1271 Monroe Turnpike, multi-age restricted development with associated site improvements.
Um, so this is just the determination as to, um, how you would like to review this application?
Question. Isn't this the same place that they already had an application in? You know, that they're going to make a retirement home?
That's, that's 25.
Yeah, I think that was someplace different.
Yeah, this was on 111.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, all right. I thought it was the same.
Right next to Highland Meadows. Highland Meadows, right. Yeah.
I have a question for Donna. Um, these, we're getting more and more large applications, and we have no staff to review them for us. Um, Joe is our agent, but he doesn't, I don't believe he is in charge of reviewing our, from our applications from a wetland standpoint. Um, can we have these done? We need to have them done. We're not capable by ourselves of doing these things um, without some other professional help. How do we go about, if everybody else agrees, having, um, them sent perhaps out of house to have them reviewed? I'm not comfortable. These are too big. They're getting bigger and bigger every day, and we are not capable of reviewing these things, and we're not going to do the town any favors if we continue to review them without some extra professional help.
They do still get reviewed by the town engineer, and the town planner would be reviewing them also, although I don't know that he does a report as much. Um, but, but the town engineer does. And Joe can review, but of course, he is not going as in-depth as an agent who, you know.
Full-time.
Full-time, because he, he also is wearing many hats.
Right.
Um, I don't honestly know. I can, I can put the request through, certainly. Um, and then hopefully get an email back. Maybe Keith, that's something you and I could work on, we could...
Sure, I also believe that we're getting, they're getting close to hiring someone replaced Denise. And whether that's, you know, in the near future or not, um, we could, the other option I think we could explore is, you know, at the time, we could look at, we could evaluate them ourselves for what we know. And then, you know, because it's certainly, it's another month because they gotta do the public notice, right? So that's that time. They have to kind of present to us, you know, just on the face of what they're doing. And usually that, you know, for a big project like these, it's usually a couple meetings. Now, of course, the second one on our list is, is town, you know, hired or state hired whoever this engineering firm, and, you know, it's a town project, so it's not probably as critical. And, or the other thing we could do is if we get to a backlog, we could request in the interim to hire a third-party consultant to do it for us, like we did with the first remediation application at Cambridge. So much smaller task, probably. And then, you know, and like I said, in, in the meantime, until staff is brought in. So, yeah, we could definitely work on that. I agree, though, it's hard to look at all this, this big stuff as volunteers and, and not knowing that, you know, not having an input from a, from town staff that, that knows this, you know, that's trained in this part of it.
Right. I know Scott, you used to do the engineering report as well as a different wetlands report. Um, so that was, that was very helpful at that time. And without that, we need somebody to do it. So if we can send it out of house, I'd be a whole lot more comfortable until we do get staff up to speed to do that.
Okay. Um, so I will, um, bring that up to the, my department head and to the selectmen, and we'll figure out what the answer is. Okay?
I, I think we should probably, you know, if they say, if they say okay, you should ask for, ask for proposals or something, because given our last time we tried to hire a professional, it'll take months.
We, we got Russell in two weeks.
Did we? Yeah, but it's, I think the way, as far as I could find out, but I think the way it's written, it's gotta be a per case, you know, basis. We're not, we're basically asking, any other way you're asking the town to hire the person they're trying to hire right now. Right?
Right, yeah.
We would have to get, we have to have a particular application that we see, and we don't feel comfortable without a review, and, and no one on town staff is capable or has the time, then we, we have to ask for, to hire the third-party consultant. Uh, so, that being said, does someone like to make a motion on this hearing determination?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion, IWC 2021-09, we move to a public hearing, uh, due to the potential of wetlands impacts.
All right, thank you. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Spence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are, we are missing Ross tonight.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so that's, now, onto IWC. Um, IWC 2021-10, Husatonic Valley Rail Trail connecting existing rail trail Wolf Park to existing trail Maple Drive. Same thing as before, um, lots of wetlands, um, lots of public, I'm sure, interest in this one. Does someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that IWC 2021-10, Husatonic Valley Rail Trail be moved to a public hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Spence, or motion by Commissioner Hall, second by Commissioner Spence, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. IWC 2021-11, 1036 Main Street. Description, I don't necessarily have.
Excavation and fill application to prepare property for future site development.
Correct. I'll make a motion there, too. Motion for Commissioner Hall, go ahead.
IWC 2021-11, 1036 Main Street, be moved to a public hearing because of its proximity to multiple other sites that have, have been reviewed here.
All right, Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Hall, do we have a second?
I'll second, and the reason is that it's a republic issue also, and, um, potential wetland impact.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Did I, did I mention it was seconded by Commissioner Spence?
You did.
Okay. Uh, all right, moving along. Others, bond release reduction reports, 7182 4 Main Street. I'm gonna table this till later. Um, you guys can either do it if I, if I chime out at the end, because I have to recuse.
Okay.
So we're skipping the whole E block. At deliberation session, no public input, deliberation on completed hearings. The items from this agenda is determined by the commission. IWC 2021-07 to Highland Drive, new home construction, draft approval.
You all should have received the draft, a hard copy in the mail and via email.
I move that we accept the, approve the, the draft approval as drafted.
Motion to approve the draft as drafted. Second by Commissioner Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now our agent approvals, doesn't look like there's anything. Uh, 14, permitted uses as of right, IPU-2018-01, Department of Public Works, road repair replacement and/or general maintenance, IW Regulations Sections 4.2C expires 3/28/2023. Great. Enforcement deliberation. Uh, deliberation on completed remediation submissions or items from this agenda. IWC 2021-06, R 64 Cambridge Drive, remediation to entail earthwork, drainage, and upland enhancement to restore previous watershed drainage patterns to eastern wetlands system. So, I like to get a gauge where everybody is at the moment with this. Um, so, there's really three, three things we could do. We could approve it as drafted, or, you know, we could, we could, or, I'm sorry, approve it as presented. We could approve it with minor, uh, changes conditions, or we could deny, right? I'd like to see where everybody's in favor at this point, like which one of those three they're, they're leaning towards.
Aren't we also waiting for deliberation on, on the, from the town attorney about the case with the, uh, intervener?
Um, possibly.
Yeah, because that was, that was holding us up a little bit before we even made a decision.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
It's Vincent Marino. I am here this evening in place of Attorney Schellenberg, covering the meeting for her, and I can address the issue if the chair would like.
Sure, go ahead, let's get it out of the way.
Okay, so, uh, just so I, I can, uh, make sure that my understanding is the same as the commission's. Uh, to my understanding, the Wetlands Enforcement Office has served a notice violation on the owner of property located at 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. To address that notice of violation, the property owner submitted a remediation plan utilizing the form created by the commission's administrative staff and presumably approved by this commission. The commission has held a number of public meetings during which the property owner presented a remediation plan, and interested parties intervened in the process. The commission is now questioning whether it has the authority to advance the process because Connecticut General Statute 22A44 provides the commission or its agent, when confronted with the violation of the regulations or statutes, uh, with, uh, it states that it may issue a written order to be served on the violator by certified mail to cease immediately subjectivity or direct availability or condition. The statute then provides a process to be followed. The statute does not provide for the issuance of a notice of violation. And some have argued therefore that the commission lacks the authority to engage in this process to resolve the notice of violation. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would submit that as municipal agency, this body is a creature of state. That means that your authority or jurisdiction extends only to what the legislature has authorized. Connecticut General Statute 22A42 provides that to carry, uh, the, the purpose of the, of the Wetland and Water Course Act is to carry out and effectuate the purpose and policies of the wetland statutes. It is hereby declared to be the public policy of the state to require municipal regulation of activities affecting the wetlands and watercourses within the territorial limits of the various municipalities or districts. Subsection B of that statute provides that each municipality acting through its legislative body may authorize any board of commissioners as may, as may be by law authorized to act or may establish new board or commission to promulgate such regulations in conformity with the regulations adopted by the commissioner pursuant to 22A39 as are necessary to protect the wetlands and watercourses within its limits. And subsection F of that statute provides municipal regulations may embody any regulations promulgated hereunder in whole or in part, or may consist of other regulations in conformity with regulations promulgated hereunder. Any regulation shall be for the purpose of effectuating the purposes of the wetland statutes. The statutory scheme goes on, Mr. Chairman, to provide in 22A42A, subsection A, that the inland wetlands agency shall, through regulation, provide for, among other things, the administration and enforcement of its regulations and statutes. The commission adopted regulations in accordance with its statutory authority on March 25th, 1988, and has admitted those regulations over time about a dozen times. Section 1.5 of your regulations provides that the commission shall resolve issues relating to violations. Your regulations, your regulations define remediation as the act or process of correcting a violation or unsatisfactory environmental condition in order to restore land, wetlands, and/or watercourses essentially to their original form. Section 6 of your regulations provides four separate times an activity action by this commission is required. When there's a regulated activity, when there's a subdivision, when there's a violation, or when there's a regulation to the, a regulation amendment proposed. Your regulations distinguish between a regulated activity and the term violations. And under section 6.3 of your regulations, you provide that any person found to be conducting or maintaining a regulated activity without permission or violating any other regulation shall subject to enforcement proceedings and penalties prescribed in section 14 and any other remedies at law. In section 14 of your regulations, you authorize your agent to issue a notice of violation or a cease and desist order. Section 14.3B of your regulations authorizes the issuance of a notice of violation, and that the commission may request the violator to appear before it to discuss the unauthorized activity. So the question before us is whether your regulation authorizing the issuance of a notice of violation and requesting that the violator appear before the body bring conformity with the Wetlands and Water Courses Act. Purpose, Mr. Chairman, I'm of the opinion that it is. The courts have routinely held that while not boundless, a wetlands commission is vested with a large measure of discretion, and that the act authorizes wetland commissions to legislate broadly. The court has also, uh, allowed wetlands commissions enough flexibility to adapt to infinitely variable conditions for the effectuation of the purpose of the statutes. And that a wetlands commission is not required to use the exact language set forth by the act when adopting regulations so long as the additional language is in conformity with the purpose of the act. Your regulations authorizing the issuance of a notice of violation is not unique. It appears in the regulations of municipalities and has been cited in judicial decisions. I found no cases that invalidates the regulation language. And this, in a, in a decision, uh, decision, Madison Land...
Excuse me, excuse me, Attorney. We're getting back, feedback from Kevin. All right, now, now it looks like he's muted or something. Okay, go ahead, continue, I'm sorry.
And, and to, to, to wrap up, in a, uh, Superior Court decision, uh, captioned Madison Land Conservation Trust v Supa, as, as a result of the failure to obtain a permit for the removal of trees and vegetation, the town issued a notice of violation to the violator. In response to the notice of violation, the violator hired retained experts to prepare a plan of remediation. The remediation plan that was submitted was not prepared as a regulated activity permit application. A public meeting was not scheduled on the remediation plan. There was a public meeting. In fact, there were two. The inland wetlands and watercourse commissions member performed a site walk. Following the two meetings and the site walk, the commission approved the remediation plan with conditions. The motion to accept the plan of remediation was made to reflect that what worked, the commission found acceptable to resolve the notice of violation indicating what was minimally appropriate with anything less or different needing to come back to the commission for review. In upholding this action, the court stated the following. The court therefore agrees with the plaintiff that at the October 2016 meeting, the commission was exercising its authority to resolve a notice of violation of its wetland regulations and not engaging in a full restoration. So, Mr. Chairman, based upon the reasoning and holding of the Madison Land Trust decision, I believe that, uh, this body does have the authority to advance this process. And, uh, as you indicated, Mr. Chair, in order to resolve the violation, you can adopt the plan as presented. You can state what you believe minimally is required for purposes of resolving the resolution, or you can deny the application.
Thank you, Attorney Marino. So we just pick it right off where we left off, correct? Normal.
Uh, can I, can I ask a question of Mr. Marino?
Absolutely.
First of all, can you please go back in the very beginning? You, you've, you've found places in our regs where, um, you stated that restoration should be as close to the original as possible. Can you tell me where that was? You went through it so fast, there's no way I could have kept up.
I'm sorry, I want, I, I apologize for the, uh, the length, the speed at which I spoke. Uh, let me see, violations, uh, enforcement. I believe it was in section six. Okay, I, I believe that was in the definition of remediation. Uh, your regulations define remediation as the act or process of correcting a violation or unsatisfactory environmental condition in order to restore land, wetlands, and/or watercourses essentially to their original form.
Okay, thank you. That, that was exactly what I needed, is those, those definitions. Um, does this, if this were to be approved Does this, if this were to be approved in however, whatever form, is that allowing or is that allowing regulated activity to happen further without any further applications, or is another application still required in order to go through due process to perform regulated activity?
What we are doing, and I don't want to split hairs, but I think. What we are doing is resolving a violation, so we are authorizing activity for purposes of resolving a violation of our regulations. We're not engaging in the regulatory process that we would engage in for a permit to conduct regulated activity.
I'm a little confused, so let me see if this makes sense. So if we were to issue an approval tonight, the applicant has the, basically the green light to go ahead.
Correct.
But only to fix the violation, not for anything else unless he comes in with a different application.
That is correct.
That's what he's talking about. So they're going to fix the violation, but they can't go and start developing something else without coming back with a whole new plan.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
All right. So thanks again, and then back to where I was, going to panel the commissioners to get their thoughts at this moment. We'll start with Commissioner Spence.
I haven't made up any list of things, but I do not feel that this application or, yeah, application I'll call it, comes close to our definition of remediation or restoration. Because it is not essentially the same as it was. And it was not. Conditions and functions are considerably different. That's just, that's just to start with. When it comes down to the nuts and bolts of the application itself, it's woefully incomplete. There are many, many things that there are missing. We do not have enough information. And I have. I'm still, as I have repeatedly said throughout this entire thing, I think that there's a better way that this can be done that will, that can restore the watershed to that, that set of wetlands that will not be in the building area or subject to any destruction or any disturbance from future building. I think there's a better way to do it. What we have now on the table is basically it's exactly what we have now. Except we don't have the fill right now. We're there talking about a pump. And the more I thought about a pump, the less happy I was with it because I am thinking about it right now. We have had volumes of rain. And it was testified during, during some of the hearings that that pump is running continually. Yeah, you can't take a bath in an empty bathtub. You fill it up a certain amount, and that's good enough. You keep going, and the bathtub overflows. So now you have killed every plant that relies on a certain water regime. You can't just pump. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't even remotely follow what nature would do. When there are other ways to do this that can accomplish what we want, which is the restoration of watershed to that wetland so that it can function on its own in perpetuity without interaction from others. The other problem with the pump is that if it dies, who knows? Yeah, we hear we're going to get quarter of a leave reports, but you know what? We're not all going to be here in a few years. In a few years, that pump might start working and stop working rather. Then who knows what's going to happen with that? That's only the very, very tip of what I'm talking about. I do believe there are other ways. Yes, the applicant did cut down on the fill, which was requested in the, in the letter. And yes, the timeline was quit, was, was cut down. But you know what? The only fill that was not, that was taken away was that that was going to be used for the restoration. The rest of it is still going toward the future development path. They didn't leave the fill for the wetlands. They took that away and said, hey, we reduce the amount of fill we're using. And therefore, the, the time that it takes is going to be less because we don't need as much time to move all that dirt. So that's just the beginning. I will let the other commissioners go, but I think there's a much, much better way of doing this. It does not, as I believe Mr. Marino said, that we are supposed to tell the applicant what we want done to get this at restoration. The restoration is not, is, the applicant is not supposed to be telling us what he's willing to do. That's not what the violation is all about. And on that note, I'll let somebody else take over for a while.
Commissioner Spence, can you just state what your position is at the current time?
Deny.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gengers.
I mean, I would approve with conditions, but I'm to go through a whole new process again. It's, I mean, it seems like we're going to go through this two to three more months of them trying to figure out what they want to, you know, what they are going to offer. I mean, I figure we should put our, our vote onto it and make them do what we want done with the conditions. So I mean, I'm open to approving it, but with conditions.
Well, what kind of conditions are we talking about? We can't ask them to redraw the plan. The here, the application is closed. So it's got to be something that's, you know, when I say minor conditions, it's got to be something about the language, the monitoring. If you thought there was something missing on the plan, every once in a while, we see something in the legend or icon that's missing. But it can't be, let's renegotiate with the applicant because it's closed. So it now has to be one of the three things. A denial. You know, like I said, so.
I mean, the only thing, I mean, one of the things that's been making a mess out of that water course or, you know, water flowing into the wetlands is part of that fixing that bridge area. Because it's blocking, it's blocking whatever water that flows down from that, from the upper other property coming in. I mean, that should be, of course, the thing that they should fix first.
Can't do it without, without an approval from us.
Yeah. I mean, the pump, the pump is going to be a partial, you know, help. But I mean, I don't know. Until, until they can actually get that ridgeline fixed, there's never going to be any water coming from that hole anyway.
They were not, they were not offering to fix the whole ridgeline. We can have a discussion back and forth.
It's not, I will have a discussion later. I asked, I wanted to panel the commissioners to see where their position is right now. Thank you.
I'm willing to approve with conditions, but I mean, I, it's, it's figuring out what conditions we can put in there.
Okay, understandable. All right, Commissioner Stewart.
I'm torn because I feel like we're, we're running around in circles because we, we didn't like the original plan. Then we went and approved the pumping system. And we didn't like the original plan because they were bringing in too much, too much fill of questionable material. So they reduced it. And you know, I don't like it because I feel like, I feel like they got paid to take out too much, and now they're going to get paid to take, bring back material in. And I guess I really blame the town for, for not, for not stopping it. You know, long before, long before we got to this stage and leaving it dragging out, even if we were right or wrong, it should have happened back then. I understand what Lois is saying about, about there may be different ways. I'm not so convinced that you're going to be able to get more water to that wetlands by bringing in, in fill at different areas because what, what I see along that wetlands now is, is a rock cut. So it's very steep. If you bring in more wetlands along or more fill along that rock cut to try to make that area wider, I understand what they're saying is you're going to need a two to one, two to one slope. So that, whatever it is, that 30, 40 feet, you've got to go out twice that distance. So you go 20 feet further out to get a little bit more water in that wetlands. Now you've got to go 80 feet further on a slope that you're getting no benefit for because that water is not going to get to the well. So you're going to be bringing a lot more fill to just get a little bit more water to that well. I fully expected that, that pump system was going to be going on forever. And do I like it? No. Part of me says I'd prefer to just, to just, you know, grade it off the way it is now and give up on that wetlands and give up on the thermal pool and it becomes, it becomes just a normal functioning wetlands. And my fear is, is if we push them to, to do something else with, with 100% virgin, virgin material, it'll never happen. There's no money in it. They'll walk away and we'll end up with a, with a scar on the land forever. So that being said, I, I'm leaning towards an approval with conditions that we work on. Are we on, are we on a timetable where we have to complete this in any? In any, so we got plenty of time to sit back and, and come up with conditions. So I guess I'm leaning towards that.
Once the hearing closes, the statutory timeframe is 65 days. They do, you, although I know this is remediation, so I'm not sure how that works actually. I'd have to check on it.
We certainly don't have to do it tonight.
No, certainly not.
I mean, I would, I would request that we draft something to at least, to at least get the staff draft some sort of an approval. So at least an approval and/or denial. So at least we can, we can you know, work on conditions and, and act at some point. We don't get to that point and then want to draft it.
Okay. So that's, that's your position, Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall.
I have read and reread the applicant's application. And as you say, that application is closed now. So our alternatives, as you've stated, would require us to place any conditions on the existing application in order to approve it. What I saw reading the application, going through the massive charts, is not sufficient in detail to be approved without conditions. The, my concern is that the, the number of conditions and the detail of conditions would be too extensive to manage. But I'm, I'm with Jim. I think we should draw up a plan and look at these conditions. Because our conversations cover a lot of bases. And I think we need to clarify and define the scope of what, what are those conditions? What do we care about? What's in our scope? And start to put together a short list. And at the top of my list, the thing that is lacking in this plan is monitoring. We call it that this monitoring of the well, monitoring of the development of the wetlands. Periodic reporting to me is not sufficient. I think we would need to say if certain conditions aren't met at some point, then work would have to cease or, you know, this is, this is considered a permit. And I don't think the permit has enough conditions on it. So try to shorten that up a little bit. I think we need to work on approval with conditions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hall. Couple things I just want to bring up. So we got this letter to pack it, right, addressed to me and the members of Monroe IWC from Margaret Minor. Should we have gotten this after this was closed?
No, we shouldn't have.
Yeah, why was this sent to us?
Because she's been watching this for months.
Well, they were.
We were done.
I believe that this actually had been emailed to you, and I just sent the hard copy.
This was, this was submitted into the record then?
Uh, hold on.
I'm looking at the letter. It doesn't have a date when it was submitted. If it came via email, that would be.
It almost makes it sound it was an address while we're in deliberations. I thought I read that. I don't want to rewrite it again.
All right. I apologize. I don't see it in there, so it may have been my oversight.
All right, we just have to, you know, whatever correction needs to be put on to make sure it's done, please. And then everybody, I have to ask you to disregard this letter. And it cannot be discussed again. All right, thank you. So my, my thought on this is that monitoring is the, from when I listen to everybody, monitoring is really the only issue that we all have with this application. Because not, not, not one of us. We all have a different idea. Okay, we all expressed our ideas to the applicant about what we'd like to see. And the way I digested it is they took a good sample of everybody and came up with a perfect, not a perfect blend, but a blend that satisfied most of what everybody was talking about. Okay, to recap, it was definitely the amount of material that we brought in and the timeframe. Okay, and any future impacts, right? So so I think what it is though, is the question is everyone wants to know, is it going to work? Is it going to work? What's the guarantee it's going to work? Because it's a five-year process. Now, somewhere in the application, there is monitoring. And somewhere between the property owner and the the environmental professionals that they have, you know, contracted and the town staff, there's going to have to be an open dialogue. And I don't know if Joe could chime in on this, or how the town will handle a particular situation like this as far as, you know, what happens at the three month, you know, I can't remember if it was quarterly inspections or what, but I, I don't see that it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask, and especially at the scale of this type of project. That condition of the approval is that the reports have to be made to the commission either by the property owners, engineers, or, you know, subcontracted specialists or the town, and then everybody's brought to speed. And at the same time, when those scheduled inspections are like on the calendar, so I don't know if a town staff would be going or if it's just, you know, soil science, but why couldn't we have a condition be that anybody on the commission is invited to walk along without, you know, making any comments or, but to observe and to see what's being tested and what's being looked at? If, if anybody desires that, that makes them feel. anybody desires, desires that, that makes them feel good. And for any commissioner down the line, as long as this goes on. So it's an open thing as long as the, as long as the application is, is open and, or, or the, it hasn't been completely resolved, right? As far as like, okay, let's say everything works out the way they say it's going to be and they get a huge replacement and restoration of quality. And then it's working, you know, let's say they decide, okay, we're going to now scale the pump back to run only a third of the time. And then keep going back on slow, slow regressions and then finding out, wow, it's really just all natural now. And this is what we got. And this is, this is great. And then we don't have to worry about how long that pump's going to last because now it's restored. It's literally restored. So all our concerns are about if it's going to work, right? But we don't, we're not just, that's like we're just, they're, they're scot free. Once they get their approval, they have bonding, they have reporting, they have to come back to us at least once or twice to do something else with the property. Okay. And then I guess to throw in like another thing is that if, if at one of those reports, something is, we, that we, we'd have to, we'd have to qualify or quantify beforehand. But if a goal isn't being met or something is going in reverse, right? So something was going great, right? So things were going great. And all of a sudden, now they're going to hell or they have to come back. They, they're, they're now, you know, they have to come back and we have to now open up the case, if you want to call it, and, and relook at what the issue is and maybe have to make some adjustments. I don't see why it's unreasonable to not expect that on something at this type of a scale. But if, I'm sorry, Joe, you're going to respond to my.
Actually, yes, I will, Keith. Thank you for asking about that. I think you bring up a couple of very good points there. I think in a project of this scale, this type of really intense review that's been going on, it would be going on for the, let's say the three years, five years, whatever the commission decides wants to have a monitoring period for. What we really need on this is a neutral, independent, third party inspection process to be taking place in conjunction with town staff and with members of the commission if they wish to go along, as you pointed out without comment on these inspections. So let's say there's four times a year and a, an independent party would be hired on a, on a, on a, you'll say five year plan or whatever it might happen to be, that they would be making inspection reporting back to the commission within a week of their inspections or before the next meeting takes place. So that way the commission will be up to speed on whatever is going on out there now. Because in the meantime, the, any commission members that wanted to go along could also make their own comments to be included in the next meeting. I think something like this could be, at this point, I'm there now. That's fine. But if I'm not there, we don't know who the next person sitting at this chair or the wellens, the wellens agent chair would be. And I think it might behoove us to have town staff as kind of an auxiliary to a professional review of what is happening out there. And as you point out, it might be after three years, it might not be necessary for this to, for this remediation to be taking place at the scale it is first specified for. If it turns out that in two years, everything is at the point at which it's of maximum health, then finally it's done its job. And it would have to be continued to be monitored so that, you know, for the life of the, of the approval or whatever might happen to the commission specifies. But I think it could approach a point where it might not be necessary anymore. Or it might be the entire length of what the approval could be so that the town is satisfied with, yes, we're getting what we have specified on this. But I do think that the only way to really handle this from a practical standpoint is to have a neutral third party do these inspections. It could be a matter of picking from a list of qualified soil scientists and everyone could agree on who it's going to be. But I certainly do not think if you somebody specified by staff, by the property owner or by the commission, it should be somebody that we all agree on. This is somebody we can live with and we're all comfortable in what the reports are going to be. So I, in a lot of ways, Keith, I do agree with what you're saying. If the real crux of this whole thing is we're mostly concerned about monitoring it, that's how you go about it. I've had to work with other situations like this before. We had an independent third party do the reviews for us, the reports at the commission, at the staff, and it was subject to review. And that way the, the commission would have a good idea of what is going on out there. I'm certainly not a qualified soil scientist and some of you might be, but I wouldn't hang our hat on just one opinion. Let's get a professional outside to look at this and we all can chime in on it. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Joe. All right. So again, to recap what, what, you know, for me to wrap up, my, my little thing is, you know, I really think they came up with some really, really intelligent solutions to all the problems that we had with the first, the first presentation. And the adding of that swale at the end, kind of like, I think tied it all together. And I felt myself that there was, there wasn't a need that anybody had as far as, as far as, you know, getting, trying to accomplish, you know, a bunch of things that we wanted to get accomplished. I thought that, I think that kind of got as much that's possible covered and included to get us the most amount of wetlands potential restoration. I don't think that, and I agree with Commissioner Stewart, I don't think that adding a ton more fill and adding any more watershed is going to make a difference or even if all it's going to do is add, you know, all it's going to do is burn a lot of diesel and, and disturb more ground and have steeper slopes that need to be restored and, and secured. Rock face is secure for about forever. You know, if you put up a slope, now you gotta, you know, make sure that vegetation in a dry, arid area is going to get established and hold forever. It's, it's a, I think, I think we're, I think we basically did what we needed to do. I think we took the first application, we criticized it, we denied it, we told, then we spoke with them on a, on an informal basis about what we'd like to see. And I really think that's what they gave us. You know, they couldn't have possibly took every, each one of your visions and, and made it, made it your vision, right? It's not possible because we can't, we don't all think the same way. We don't look at it the same way. But to, to get a nice blend and, and have, I think, most, most everybody's concerns addressed. I, I'd have a hard time saying that they, you know, proven to me that they didn't. So I would, you know, if we can come up with, and we want to talk for a little while right now, there's not a whole lot left, except for the stuff I recuse from about this whole thing about monitoring conditions. Let's, let's do it. Let's see if that, let's see if we could hash out the approval language. All right.
Can we discuss this a little further?
You still have something.
I mean, granted, I'm, so far I'm outvoted, but I'm not ready to give up just yet. I have some things that, first of all, we don't have any hard copy or any details whatsoever on that swale that was discussed at the last meeting. You can't go through and plan on that swale. We have no details. That was shown to us on a screen. We never received anything for that. So there is a severe lack of information there.
All right. Let's, let's address that. Let's just nip that right now.
This is part of, this is part of either a denial or, or an approval because.
Hold on, hold on for just a second. If they submit it as part of the record during the application, okay, that at some point, if it didn't get to us, yes, that was kind of mistake, but doesn't mean it's not part of the application. It's not part of the record. So we can say we need that to make our final decision, right?
But suppose we needed it in front of us to look at it?
I'm saying.
It was just big.
We can look at any part of the record while we're deliberating. We have the right.
Anything. If we don't like what we saw.
Right.
And we did not have really an opportunity to even examine it at the last meeting.
Absolutely. But I'm, my point is, is that it's part, if it's part of the record, we can analyze it now. If you want something changed, then you could, you could, you could say this is, sorry, my dog, my stepdaughter just knocked the door. My, I gotta go let him in.
Can I jump in here for just one second while he's taking care of that? Lois, I'm, I'm with you on the lack of detail. And I'm going to say we lack the detail and we need the detail on the pumping, on the well. When I asked the question at our last meeting, I was referenced to the page. I've read the page, but there are no words that fully describe that. So I think whatever.
That's the problem. We can't add detail. At this point, we can't add anything else. We can't ask them for anything else. If we don't have the detail, we do without the detail. And that's one of my major issues.
It's on us to, to define better than.
It's not our job though to define it. We can't necessarily do that.
That's, that's my problem with that, too.
Let me fill in for what happened in the last 40 seconds.
I was jumping in there, Mr. Chairman, echoing Lois's concern about the lack of detail. My concern on lack of detail is with the pump and the, the well process.
Well, if I could, if I could just, just reiterate a fact, okay? We approved, we approved the pump system already.
As a temporary stopgap.
And the pump was at a different location. This, this is involving drilling a new well.
So, so they didn't, they didn't supersede the conditions to the new one? I mean, they didn't, you know, they didn't use the same conditions for the new location? I mean, we obviously had a lot, we had a lot of questions about that. We had a lot of concerns. And then it got to a point where we approved that pump. So what, what could have not been there? The, what do we not, you know, what could we have not approved the first time that we're asking now? What's any different?
We have no details on the new well. No details only on the old well.
And there, there is on the drawing, a picture of where the new well would be located and a, a line drawing showing where the pipe would run, but there is not additional detail. But I'm, I'm not saying that this would stop us going forward with the denial. This would be a, a condition we would need to monitor that the well was installed properly, was performing properly and tie requirements to that.
So, so let me just, because I want to help out. I know a little bit about wells and how they're drilled. Okay. So if someone says, I'm going to put a 600 foot well in, and there's a 600 foot well, you know, a mile away at the same elevation, they may not perform exactly the same. That, you know, so that at the time, the only condition we could put is that it's going to produce so many gallons per minute, right? Because that's what we're looking for, for rehydration. So we set a standard there with the first well. So it was very simple is the new well must perform to the equal or better than the existing condition. It's very simple. Because you can't say, they may have to go 1,500 feet. We have to bring in a big, huge rig. If they're going to, if the replacement of the well requires it to perform at a certain standard, it's on them to do it. It's an unknown. You don't, you don't know.
I, I think that's a good, good way to state that condition. I'm, I'm with you on that one. And as long as we are able to monitor the performance of that well and get the reporting as, as Joe had maybe described, I'm okay with that.
All right. Thank you for that. That was, that was helpful because I think that was a big thing that was kind of knocking around everybody's head. Lois, you were on something when I.
Yeah. Um, there was, there was a couple of things that kind of stuck in my craw last time around when.
Sorry. I want to go back. Did we finish with the swale thing?
No, not really. We do not have hard copies.
But it is part of the record.
It just, it can be part of the record. It's always anything that somebody says.
What I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say, Lois, is if it's, if it was part of the record and we didn't get hard copies to look at, then getting hard copies to look at during deliberation is totally cool. We could do that. It's not new information, right? And they're not going to talk about it. We're just going to look at it if we want to look at it. And if we have concerns about the drawing, we could drop, we could, we could, or the details, we could, we can make those parts of the condition if there's something about the swale that we don't like, right? And also, I do believe, or maybe I'm wrong, but Donna, can we also, is it too late to have anybody at the town staff evaluate or answer questions about anything that's on the record right Meaning like, let's say, let's say Lois looks at the, the swale and says, well, I don't think the swale's wide enough or it's too steep. It's going to road out. Could we ask town engineer to look at the details and, and give a response to it?
Um, you know, I don't know. This was a remediation application. It.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Moreno.
Yes. You can get, you can get, speak to staff at this point. You're in a deliberative mode. So you cannot take in any new evidence. You cannot hear from the, the parties or the public, but you can speak to your administrative staff for your turn.
And get, and get input from them.
And ask, ask questions for clarification purposes.
So is that.
Not for purposes, not for purposes of new information, but for purposes of clarifying what's in the record.
Okay.
For clarifying for what's in the record. So we couldn't ask the town engineer if he felt that this swale was designed correctly.
I would imagine if he felt it wasn't, that would have been addressed during the hearing.
That's what I would think, too.
One of the things we need to ask is, did, was there ever a hard copy submitted to anybody? Did, is there an exhibit? Or, no, we don't have exhibits for this.
We have a few.
But do we, do we have a hard copy? Or does the town hall have any copy of that? Or was it just something that was presented on a computer screen where nobody has any copy except for what was shown on that screen?
The engineer may be totally unaware that it exists.
That's, that's what I'm asking too, BJ. That's, that would be my first question, too. I don't know if engineers reviewed this at all.
It certainly wasn't evaluated by staff.
You could inquire of staff that question. I mean, you know, we, I'm assuming we'd, we'd be speculating. We don't know the answer. So.
Donna's looking ugly to see if she was, if she received anything.
Oh, let's see.
While we're on that, while, while Donna is doing that, there was something else I wanted to bring up that is kind of bothering me. One of the reasons that Kevin said that.
I'm so sorry. So one of the things is that letter was an exhibit. It was up at the previous meeting on the town website. So.
What letter?
The letter from Margaret Minor.
Oh, okay.
Just so you know, so that was included.
Okay. So I take back what I said earlier.
I apologize. I, I don't have everything right here.
All right. While Donna is still looking, let me, let me finish that thought. Um, he said the three and a half acres of develop, he, the, the, some of my concepts could not be workable because about three and a half acres of developable land would not be developable. Now that should be immaterial, first of all, because they took out more than three and a half acres worth of land illegally. So that land should be restored. Um, not just because it's watershed, but because it was removed illegally. And secondly, that pad on four independents only has to be three acres. It's three acre zoning in that park. The, what they're presenting is not necessary. Not necessary. They could reduce the amount of fill from that pad. Rather than from the restoration area. And that's one of the, I still think that they could do a much better job, but their focus is much more on developable area than it is on restoration. And we gave them the perfect out by giving them a pump, my God, does it get any easier than that? This is, I, I'm, I just think this is a real cop out on our part. I don't think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And nobody wants to see it for another nine months, but we don't have to, if it does come back, we can incorporate the old record into this one. And it becomes. Part of it, and we don't have to rehash everything that we have, that we've done before, only the new stuff. I do still think, and I wish that you guys would all reconsider. That maybe there is going to be a big slope. But you know what, we got lots of big slopes all over town. Somehow they get allowed. And nobody seems to be terribly concerned about them. And it's, um.
Lois, Lois, I don't have a problem with the slope, but, but we have a problem with making them bring in, bring in all this material.
But if they, they, if they brought in less for independence, they wouldn't need to bring in as much, they could use that amount. In the, in the slope for the restoration portion. This is supposed to be about restoration.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that you would get significantly more, um. Drain it, you wouldn't get significantly more area running to that wetlands, what you would lose is you'd lose a developable lot. And I agree, it's not, it's not necessarily for the development of the property, but I don't think the project works. Unless you're using your recycled fill for a lot of it and making a lot at the end, if you, if you develop this lot. And you fill it back in and you get the wetlands to work and you end up with, with, with. You know, no wa- and no development, I don't know where we, where we've gotten.
Jim, it's seventy-one acres, you can't tell me there's no developable area there. It, it's, it's huge, and the very first application they brought us, the very first one. That was denied because it had too much, too much material in it, and that was the one that Southwest Conservation District said it was just too high. Had they just cut down the twenty feet. That in height. They would have eliminated a ton of fat, a ton, bad, bad phraseology, but they would have re, re- eliminated a lot of the extra fill. They, in their very first one, they put all of the slope. In the U R A. Which was perfect, they took it all out of the. Developable, the, the area to be developed. It would have remained separate. We don't have specific, this is another problem, we don't have specific lot line. Configuration changes. Everything is very loosey goosey right now. There are not, there's nothing that's, that, this is such an enormous project. And we're pretending like it's a fifty-foot wetland with nothing else attached. This has enormous rep, um, implications and repercussions. If we don't do it right, we'll be paying the price for this for many, many years, regardless of how many times they say you, they, we can come back, and yes, they would come back for various things. But sometimes when something's done, it's done. And if it's not done right, we are, we pay the price. So I just. I think we can do better. Much better. And I'm still very upset about the pump, I don't like that, with the more I thought about all this rain that we've had and the pumping of water. Unless somebody's out there every day monitoring it, we're going to either starve the plants of water, which we can't do now because we're pumping, or we're going to drown them all. And that's not, that, that completely reduces and eliminates the function of that wetland besides. We, we are doing a disservice if we pass this.
If I could just, um, make one comment about something like that, I'm sorry, hold on, I'm sorry about that. Let me put the camera on again, sorry, folks. Hello?
Joe, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Turned your mic off.
Well, while we're waiting for him, uh, Donna, were you able to get any luck finding if that? If that last swale thing was part, mate, was presented?
Uh, the map that I found on, online is the last submission, which was the June. Uh, second, and it was a full twenty-nine sheet full plan set, which you all, I believe, do have.
Yes, we do.
And that swale is not on there?
Right. The swale was presented at the very last. Half an hour of the last hearing.
Okay.
Donna, which plan say that was, was that June second?
Yes, June second.
Okay. And do you see the swale in it, Commissioner Hall?
I have not. And I, I'm assuming it would be in the same. Plan page as the. I'm a, I'm going to have to say, I have not seen it.
It should be in the, it should be in the proposed conditions overall section, uh. Quick. I have the six-two-twenty-one set, is that what I'm talking about?
It would be on two-point-two-three and it's not there.
That's where I thought it would be.
Something else that's missing that they had originally offered was a conservation easement, without a conservation easement, there's no guarantee any of this will stay.
On sheet two-point-three-oh, there is a line for the, for swale.
That's just to the temporary sediment basin.
Yeah, that's why I'm not seeing it in that area at all. What's the?
I don't see it either. But I do remember seeing something shown, it was, they presented it.
I think he was responding to your question of that evening. Where you said, well, you couldn't, you bring a swale down.
Well, it was the following meeting, it came back.
I think, I think he came back and. I think he came back and showed it on, and showed it on the screen, as, when he shared his screen. And in my opinion, I, I agree, it's not perfect to not have it on, on the plans, but. If he, if he during a meeting says he can, says he can build it. Shows it on the screen, I don't see why we can't have a condition that he, he, he constructs it and, and that it, it be done to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
If that's, if that's, right, and. It's sucky as it is that somebody probably made a big hoops right now. Uh. To start all over again because not there, but he showed it to us. It's a simple, the swales are not the hardest thing in the world to develop. And all he was doing was starting the watershed. At a lower, at a lower point. Or no, I'm sorry, I think it was a higher point. In the water course. So that more of this water would shed through more space. It's, it's again, it's, it's got to be on paper, but it also has to pass inspection. It has to pass inspection, and its purpose. Its purpose has to, has to function in the field. It's part of the approval process, it's part of the inspection process. I don't see how, you know, including that detail. You know, I. It's a tough one, I mean, we've seen stuff missing before, if we all said we never saw it and we never heard, well, I guess the other question we could say. Is we could ask to go, someone could go back. And look at the recording, or the minutes even. And see if. It was presented by the applicant that they were going to provide the swale, that they, you know, the language will show, well, the video will show. Right, it's recorded, this is all recorded, will show what went on there, that's then becomes part of the public record in a way. Right, I mean, obviously he drew it, he showed it to us, it's not like he balled it up and threw it in the trash, and he's going to draw something different.
But there's no detail, Keith, you can't send an inspector out there to look at something. And they say, well, okay, there's a swell, how long is it supposed to be?
But again, the condition of the approval, the condition of the approval.
That's not our job, and at some point, if you keep adding conditions. You might as well start over, this has been told to us many, many times.
Well, I know, I would see the need for two conditions. I would see the need for two conditions, one is something that he showed us and somehow didn't get on the plan set that was set out to us.
Because it was a flood, it was a last-minute decision. And I'm, I'm ninety percent sure.
It was the last decision that we had.
That night.
No.
But you had it at that night, and he, because he would have, he would have submitted, he's good.
I remember, I remember in the rec, I remember reading the minutes. Or the following day that he said that. He didn't address that it was a request. From the previous meeting, he didn't say that, I, per, per request of the commission. He said, we added this swale to help bring, like, I almost remember exactly how he said it. He said, he didn't say that, per the request of the commission. Or maybe, but, but he said, we added this swale. To the, to the, to, to draw the water down to a higher, to, to an earlier start. To watershed through the wetlands. I, I remember, I remember he did it, because I know that it was my question.
It was your question.
And, and I would have, I would have, I would have held his feet to the fire if he didn't answer my question. I think he may not recognize that was my question, whatever the case may be, but I do remember that he said it, I do remember there was a plan show, map showing it.
Yes.
And I do know that, I do know that swales are so common in this industry that no engineer that owns a computer. Could possibly draw one that's wrong. I, I, I'm sorry, that, that's, you know. Presumptuous at all, but I can't imagine that it could be drawn wrong with today's technology, they're done all the time.
I'm not, I'm not contesting that, Keith. I'm, I'm, I'm just working on fifteen years of experience. Where I hear staff say, well. We couldn't really do anything about it because it wasn't on the plan. It wasn't on the plan, it wasn't on the plan, we had heard that so many times. And it binds the hands and feet of our staff people. We have to have something concrete for them to go out and inspect. Regardless of how easy it is to create on a computer, or, or how foolproof it is. It needs to be on a plan, and.
Can a condition of approval have a condition that the condition be approved? Later on? I, you know what I'm saying, like? Like, we could have the condition rule that this detail of the swale needs to be installed. But before they actually, let, let's say, before, before they have their pre-construction meeting. They have to come forth with. Or, or they, I don't know, it's, it seems like. That, it just seems like it's, it's a workaround.
So I was reading the minutes from the last meeting. And there's not a whole lot in here about the swell, it's actually. What it says in the minutes is that Mr. Soli advised, in response to a suggestion made by Commissioner Spence. A swell can be constructed. To collect all the runoff within the current constraints of the wetlands and feed that directly into the wetlands and vertical pool.
That was from the twenty-third minutes, Donna?
Yes. And that's the only thing I see about a swell.
So we haven't approved the twenty-third, I didn't listen to the whole.
You haven't, you haven't approved them yet, but I'm just.
Not yet listened to the entire recording again.
This is the twenty-third of June?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It was the last time we met.
This was before the last time, this was presented to us before we started deliberating.
No, no.
It had to have been.
It was on the twenty-third, we didn't deliberate.
You just closed on the twenty-third.
You closed on the twenty-third?
Yes.
It could have been the meeting before.
I think if it would have been, they would have, they would have given us copies. They know what we need.
Yeah, that was on the twenty-third, that was, we never got anything about a swale before that. That should make it easier to go back and view the video to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, you can condition your approval. On the, uh, inclusion of a swale. That must be, uh, approved by the commission at a future hearing.
Okay.
You can do that?
You can do that.
New one to me.
Wow, all right, well, that helps a lot.
If that, if that swale is not part of this. Presentation and you feel a swell is necessary. You can make the inclusion of a swell a condition of approval. And the review, uh, and approval of the swell is, has to be subject of, of a future proceeding.
Okay.
So what, at, at that point, then they have to bring in another application for the swell?
That would be a separate application.
The swell, just like the pump was a, was a cutout. You know, section and it got approved, so they could start the pump.
As.
And really, the swale, the swale is one of the last things they're going to be doing.
I, I, I refer back to the Madison decision where the court specifically stated that. The commission approved with condition. With the expectation that a subsequent application would be filed for approval.
But that was for all of their work, was it not?
It was not.
Not just one small part of it?
It was for part, it was only for part of it, because a part of their approval was dependent upon an agreement between the violator and an adjoining property owner. And since there was no agreement, that caused the whole application to come in as, uh, seeking a, a permit, but. Had they reached an agreement as contemplated by the, uh, approval of the N O V. They would not have had to come back. So, you know, you can, uh, I do, based upon my reading of the Madison decision, I believe you can. Subject your approval to conditions. Uh. That require further, uh, application.
Okay.
Okay.
Kind of along those same lines, if I might. Lois, you had mentioned the lot line or the reconfiguration of the two properties. And I'm looking for that in the plan, I don't recall that we saw that. We were assured that that was not a big. Deal to resection the properties. Could we also have a requirement? Of, at a later date to, for the approval, they would have to. Approved by the commission that the. Property was reconfigured. Because you remember, it was important to keep the. Pump and all of the restoration on the four independents property. Or as I should say, it's important that it all be on the same property. Restoration tied to one address or the other. So I don't think we should forget about it, I don't believe there's anything in here that states the property would be. Uh, re-divided, subdivided, I'm not sure the term.
Does anybody remember what it was that the intervenor was? Does anybody remember what it was that the intervenor was trying to say to us about, um, not changing lot lines? That was one of his recommendations. And I'm trying to remember why he said that. Yeah, I think it's something to do with selling a piece of property before the work is done, or something. I wish I could actually remember it. Um, we practically need a transcript of these things, so we can get all this information. There's too much to try to remember. There is a proposed lot line revision on, oh, no date. Uh, 5521, but I don't even know if that's the right, I don't know if that's the right one or not. When did we deny the previous, um, I've got, I've got my plans mixed up here, so when did we deny the previous application? Because this might have been part of that.
That was made part of the record. At the meeting, um, the intervenor had requested that that be added, and that's in the minutes.
Um, this, this is page EX1, so I don't know if that's what,
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if that's the same one you're referring to, Donna? I'm sorry, I-
Um, no, I'm sorry, um, I'm just saying that the previous application that was denied, um, it was requested by the intervenor that it be part of the record here.
Oh, okay.
So, that drawing you're looking at, Lois, EX1 on 55, that does show it, but what assurance do we have to actually complete this?
Good question.
Your condition, right?
Well, you, we also need, would need to specify when that was to happen.
Right. I'm kind of jotting down general conditions. I've got, uh, five at this point. Do we want to take a step back and say we need to make a list of the conditions that we each want to see in there, or we agree should be in there?
I think we, we can keep going the way we are now, because that, this, um, we will eventually need to do that, but I don't know that we need to do it, because I'm doing the same thing, jotting them down as we go. There was something else. I gotta find my other notebook.
Could, could we? Want to review the five we have already and, and, and see how they read, and we feel they're all, you know, good to go?
Well, I don't think they're good to go, while they're kind of rough notes, but-
Again, we could still, you know, take some time for us all to like what it's, how it's said, it was read, and, you know.
And they, some may be broken out further. I had inspection criteria as one condition, and, but that's kind of goes with the Joe's suggestion of a third-party inspection for the maintenance and monitoring. So, uh, that's probably a set of detail around that condition.
Uh, well, we could, we could go, we could do a general outline on the monitoring, right? So, based on what Joe Chapman said, um, you know, third-party, uh, you could have the, the people from the town or commission, you know, present at the scheduled time, um, the report back within a week, and, you know, it's open to, if there's something that doesn't, isn't hitting the, the, the goal, you know, the goals, that we could, we have the op, you know, option to, to have the, you know, to address the property owner about, you know, the, the lack of success, I guess.
Keith, if I could jump, if I could jump in for a second on that one?
Sure.
I think you've got a couple of things. One of the conditions that you're talking about now is the, uh, the, first of monitoring, okay, you can, um, you get the swell, okay, so let's just, let me take, let me jump back one second for the swell. You could have as part of your conditions that it has to be reviewed by town engineer in order to make sure that the criteria for the swell is correct. So that could be part of the condition you want posed. It's gotta be, gotta be reviewed by engineer. The other thing you do too is, it doesn't have to rely on necessarily a biannual, every three months, or be too much inspection period. I think what we should do is have the neutral third-party soil scientist look at this and tell us how often they should be out there to review this in mediation process. They might say initially, "We need to go out there once a month." They might say that, yeah, we could do that for six weeks.
You're breaking up, Joe.
Joe, you're breaking up. Um, I think what we were trying to say, and, and chime in as soon as your signal gets good, but what we're trying to say is, just have the third-party company as part, contracted to do the reviews and the inspections, and they'll determine what the schedule is, and how often they have to come to the set. So just make it very simple in a way.
And who determines the criteria that they're inspecting for?
They do. They are a third-party, everybody agrees on it, and their job is to determine what the inspection schedules. I mean, it's gotta be somebody's, you know.
Not just the schedule, but what are they, what, what-
The criteria, they're gonna determine it, that's what they do, they determine it. They look at what the goal is, they look at, they look at the proof plan, they, they know where we want this to go, and they obviously have the experience, because they're in the business, and they know how often they need to go look and report to us.
Okay.
Was it that they're reporting the conditions of the wetland, or we're reporting on-
Reporting on the restoration effort, on how well it's working, how, you know, it can't be the site work, because that's really P&amp;Z's deal, not ours. Right? But as far as how the water flow is, is performing, how the pump is performing, all these concerns that we have with the Wetlands Commission.
It seems to me that we would need a wetlands biologist to evaluate how well the wetlands are doing. That's not really the, a soil scientist thing.
Lois, we're not, we're not saying, we're not getting specific about the degree.
Well, you know, it's throwing out an idea.
But I was saying, you hire a company that does this for, that's their business. They figure it all out, they present, just like what we did for the, the evaluations for the first time around. We had four companies present us their, you know, their, their staff, you know, their, their accolades and, and how they do it, and we picked them based on, there, it's gonna be the same type of process again. But it's their job to be able to go out and take the samples and report, you know, report back to us whatever's, you know, necessary for us to, you know, be satisfied with the work.
Okay, there's, there's a lot of, um, addendums to that part that I guess we'll have to address in a future time, because you don't, they don't just appear. You have to have somebody pay for them. The money needs to go into escrow in advance, so that,
Right.
You know, so there, there's particulars involved in there that I think we may need to address, but as long as we're aware that they need to be addressed, we're fine.
Yeah, it's a condition of approval, and that, you know, we don't have to spell it all out right now. They can't start until this firm is satisfactorily hired by all the people, town, us, them, we all agree. Can't start the project. So they have to jump, they have to get on the ball, or whoever gets on the ball and puts together, gets the list of potential candidates, and we have a, a next meeting, they come in and they, each, we hear their, their spiel on what they do, and, and we pick, everybody picks, and now that part's in place. It's not a lot of work on our-
Are you looking to have that done for the next meeting?
It's a condition of approval, so it's, I think, yeah, it does put a little bit more work on, on our shoulders, but I don't know who provides those lists. I mean, I think-
Do that-
Actually, hold on, Commissioner Stewart might be able to help us out, because he's awake. How are these lists populated? How does this process happen?
You mean, find an independent, um, inspector? I mean, I would, I would say we'd use the ones we dealt with before, and, and request, and request proposals, and, and, and see what they come back with. But I think it's a, it's a, it's a condition of approval. We don't, certainly don't have to do that in advance of approvals. And then we just have the staff write a condition, and, and we go with it.
And, and upon approval of the draft, we notify those four companies that are being requested to give us another proposal.
Yeah.
Right? And then we could ask all the questions of the third-party people that you all have about how often you're gonna be there, what kind of tests you're gonna take, all sorts of stuff, and we choose based on, you know.
Who gives us the proposal we like the best.
Right. Takes a lot of pressure off of us.
I like that.
Okay, so what, what was this, where, where else we were going?
Well, we had a- It sort of generalizes it to three. One is that third-party. Second one is the swell and all the information that goes along with that. And then the, the, the last one I had was the lot line, when they reconfigured the property.
Were we gonna put, were we gonna add the commission to be able to, um, accompany as a separate condition? Or is that gonna be an addendum to some other condition?
Well, I think it's part of the first-
Trying to give the headlines.
Yeah, but that's part of the first-
Headlines only, okay.
Yeah, that's just a little sidebar to the first condition we talked about.
Okay, then the other thing is that the intervenor asked sir, us to do certain things. We should evaluate each one of those points.
Hold on for a second, one question. I just want to clarify the lot line thing.
Oh, sure.
They, they didn't do the lot line change?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, they said that could, that would happen in the future.
Well, I think, you know, okay, so it's a, that's a legal, that's a legal thing, I believe, if, if I'm saying it wrong, uh, counsel, please tell me, but that's something that's a file, like, that they don't do until they get approved. They're not gonna go do it, I think, unless it's approval.
Say, within 270 days of approval, we would require that they, that they reconfigure the property or something.
Right.
I just think it's important-
Into the plan.
Yes, because that puts all the remediation onto one property, you know?
Right.
I believe that's very important.
Right, so that could certainly be in there, and that would be, that's kind of normal. Um, it's part of the application, we're just checking that it's executed.
Exactly. A lot of these are mundane, like any project plan. It's just some detail.
All right, Commissioner Spence, what, you were talking about, something about the intervenor?
I was saying that in, when we started this second process, intervenor, and we, we very specifically went through his letter, point by point, to, um, determine what it was that he was asking us to include as conditions. So, we need to revisit them. Unfortunately, I don't have them written down.
Uh, I remember at the time, we had went through and, and, and determined that almost all of it was, was either covered or irrelevant.
I don't know that we had discussions on each one of those.
We definitely did.
I think there was more of a, an opinion given, but I don't think it was a discussion.
As far, and, and again, counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, the intervenors gave us suggestions. There wasn't, there was nothing that I believe that we determined in the hearing, or in the application, that there was something that they found that was so, you know, so important that it had to change the direction of the application. Um, I'm trying to remember, I think a lot of the stuff that they were concerned with, we talked about, we discussed, but we could implement anything that anybody presents to us as information, right, that we like. But it's not required, it's all on our own, you know, what, what we want to do, what we like. So if we want to go back and review that list, I didn't keep it, because I'm pretty sure I checked off every single item on it at the time.
Well, I'll, I'll, I have some of them written down here as I was going through the minutes, which I haven't finished. Um, some of the things that they requested was that we require that all other permits from outside agencies be sought and, and procured, I guess is the word. And from my research, we can do that, because much of the work, I'm a-
Explain, explain that again, explain that again, about-
They, they requested that we put down as a commission, as a condition, rather, that they need to procure all other permits from outside agencies as well as ours, and that can be a condition of approval. And I talked to somebody at DEEP, and they said that that was a legitimate condition.
I, I don't think you can, you can subject your, your permit on another permit. I think you can, what I've done in the past is I've said, "You must apply for the permit", but I don't think you can say you have to get this permit to have ours.
Because there is overlapping jurisdiction, and it's okay.
It does, so you're gonna, so first of all, they need an approval, okay? They have, they can't start the work. I think Mr. Chapman will say, "They can't have the pre-construction meeting without the P&amp;Z approval." Nothing's gonna happen. They ha, it's part of this, the, the rules of doing business in the town, you know?
I think that the intervenor was leaning more toward DEEP, and maybe, I don't know, the Army Corps of Engineers-
From the beginning, that DEP is going to do their thing. They're involved, and we have no say about it. It's a P&amp;Z matter. P&amp;Z could make that condition. We can't make that condition.
Because wherever it affects wetlands, we can. Um, I see, um, Mr. Marino has chimed in, let's see.
Yeah, yes, you can condition your approval on the granting of another permit, for example, uh, you know, like in zoning, uh, an approval could be contingent on getting a sewer authority approval. So in this instance, if you feel there's a need in order to protect the wetlands, that the applicant get another approval from another agency, you can make that as a condition of approval.
Town agency? Or any federal agency?
Any agency, so, you know, you can condition the approval that the, uh, applicant get all approvals necessary from all other agencies, whatever they may be.
Who, what are they? What are they?
I, I don't know, as I sit here-
Who determines that? There's gotta be, you know, what agents here, so.
The applicant will have to determine what other conditions are necessary to obtain them. They could be DEEP, they could be Army Corps, uh, it could be zoning, uh, local zoning, that is. So, you know, that's something that during the process, the applicant will advance. But, you know, you may not want your, your approval hanging out there if, for example, they need Army Corps of Engineer approval, and they get that, they get, get to not. So you may condition your approval-
We could require them to get Army Corps of Engineers approval?
No, that's not what I said. I said-
I know, that's what you said, but why would it make a difference? If the Army Corps of Engineers is required to, or if they're required to go in front of the Army Corps of Engineers to, so they could start their work in town, what do we have to do with that?
You don't have anything to do with that, Mr. Chairman. What you have is, for example, like a zoning commission might grant an approval subject to the applicant getting the approval of a sewer authority, because without sewer, they cannot build their projects, so therefore, the, as a condition of approval, they have to get another, another approval. Uh, so you can do that. Um, as I sit here, I do not know what, if any, other approvals are necessary.
Right, that's why I feel the same way. We know it's P&amp;Z, that's already, that's already there, we don't have to say that. Right?
That, that's correct.
And P&amp;Z is cover, and P&amp;Z covers DEEP, correct? We found that out way from the very beginning, from Russ, I believe?
That was not his jurisdiction to say that. He did not have the authority to say that.
To say what?
Covers DEEP.
To say who covers what.
Who requires a DEEP permit? Who says you need a DEEP permit?
Did I?
You're the applicant, and you go to town, "I want to fill in a hole." Who says you need a DEEP, you have to go and get approval from DEEP? Who determines that?
The, the, the DEEP determines it, and based upon-
So every application has to go in front of DEP?
No, you have to, you have to familiarize yourself with the regulations and the statutes and know what permissions you need.
Okay.
You have to obtain them. It's not for the town to advise the applicant.
So the applicant- So the applicant could have, could apply to the wetlands and the P and Z, skip DEEP and still get his approval and start working.
And then DEEP can, if DEEP discovers that an activity is going on without its approval when necessary, it can, it can issue a cease and desist and, you know, uh, advance its process.
All right, so I don't see why we can't say yes, you know, the the conditions, our permits conditioned on uh determination and approval if necessary for a DEEP permit. That's easy.
Right.
And any other applicable.
They're not, they're, I never, can't imagine someone has got this much money on the line that they're gonna not do that, but hey, it's good. We could put it in there. It's easy.
It never hurts to cover your butt.
Right.
That was one. Um, another request that he had was that the previous record should be included with this record.
I believe we under discussed that. And what was the determination on that? This, what did we discover in that discussion?
I don't know that we had a discussion on it.
I'm pretty sure we didn't. That was that was an interesting one, right?
I think it's a good idea.
Do you have something to say?
We.
It looks like you had something to say on that.
No, that was, you did have that discussion. It was included. They had requested that it be made part of the uh this application.
Okay.
Okay, so that was done. So that was done? It's already part of the?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay, all right.
Another thing they asked was for us to require um access if we want it to their field documentation. And before you say that's a deep thing or a P and Z thing, it is under our jurisdiction too, because anything that they place in an upland review area that could possibly affect the wetlands is in our jurisdiction. So all they're asking us to say is to put a condition that we can have access if we want it. It doesn't mean they have to submit things to us. It doesn't mean, you know, we have to have daily reports. It just means that if we need it, we can get at it.
You're talking about their daily reports and logs, not the, not the reports from the inspection agency or wherever like that?
I would imagine it covers all of that.
Okay, I don't see why that's an issue. I don't remember that one. But they agreed to it? They must have. We had a big.
No, this wasn't a matter of of decreeing. This is their, they were asking us to put this in.
At the time.
Of approval.
You're talking about the intervenor?
Yeah.
By the time, I believe we had an open discussion with the applicant going over those lists and if there was requests that were made to be conditions of the application, I do believe they chimed in as in favor or making a big, you know, think about it or something, right? So I can't imagine it's an issue. If it's on the record as an as an agreement, then it's good. It's good.
BJ, did you want to say something?
I was just trying to make sure I understood here. Uh, since I was trying to take a note, this is access, you said, to the field information?
Field documentation.
Okay.
Oh, Phil. Oh, I thought you said field too.
No, Phil.
All right, yes.
Access, okay. That's good.
They also asked for a detailed dust mitigation plan, which I'm sure they already have because I think it's required, but um it can't hurt, put it that way.
Wouldn't P and Z be requiring?
Well, I gotta remember that anything that affects our wetlands is our jurisdiction too.
We've seen that description of the cloud of dust, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But they didn't have the dust mitigation part of the app, in the application?
I don't recall seeing anything. Then again, I just don't recall it.
We can, we can review the, as we flesh out the condition.
Um. Those were the only ones I had a chance to write down. There might be more. Um. I'm running out of time today. I've got the letter here, though.
Feel free to email me all this.
Okay, um.
Can I ask about an item? We had a lot of discussion over. And that was the liner. Do we feel that we need to have a condition in regarding the liner? Or do we accept the liner the way it is?
I I thought that if the liner wasn't, I mean, I thought we agreed it was, it was okay as presented. Otherwise, I can't imagine we would have closed the the uh application without, you know, satisfactory presentation on that, but that's how, that's how I remember it.
I was satisfied with the liner. Um, I I know that originally they proposed to put you know, natural fill only um in an area a hundred feet away from the the Vernal Pool, the wetlands there. Um, and then we discussed it and they they accepted that they would go all the way out. But I, all the way out to where it slopes to the to the wetlands, so the high point of the sloped area. Um, I'm not sure that they actually showed that on their plans or not, but I wanted to make sure as a condition that that all the material on on top of the the liner that drains the wetlands is is uh natural material. And they did agree to that in the in the public hearing, but I'm not sure that it ever got on the plans.
I'll make a note of that and then we can flesh that out if we need to. Better start with a longer list and shorten it up, tighten it up.
Going back to the um, the documentation, it just said that produce or make available all the documentation it has regarding all materials that have been received by the applicant or his predecessor entitled at the site and used to fill the property. Which is kind of the long way of saying what I said. Putting, putting dust plan. I think we've covered all of his points.
I have no other points to add.
Do we want to ask for a conservation easement? I know it's too late. The problem is it's too late in the process to accept one. But without a conservation easement, you do pretty much what they want to, right up to the edge of the wetlands in the future. It's um.
Yeah, but Lois, we can get that when they plan on developing the property. I mean, they could do what they want, but they can't develop it, so.
Good point.
That's a point. I don't know. Just for the record, I'm still not happy with it. I still think we can do a whole lot better. I can't come up with anything else right now. Maybe I will by the time we have the draft approval slash denial. Um.
BJ, you have the the well condition on your list?
Yes, I tied that to the third party inspection.
Okay.
Well, um, performance and performance requirement, monitoring.
So are you looking for me to do a draft approval?
Someone's got to make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we create a draft approval.
With with conditions?
With with conditions. Thank you.
Draft approval with conditions. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Stewart, uh, read into the record those conditions, Commissioner Hall, on your.
Understanding that they are very rough at this point and really notes. And I'm just going to go in the order that I put them, not in their level of importance. The lot line reconfiguration that we saw on exhibit one dated five five and a date when that would configuration would be required. The use of a third party inspection and all the detail we've been discussing for monitoring that would include the well and pump performance. That would also include the inspection criteria that would be developed by the third party that will review in the future. The swale, all the things we talked about, the swale to construct uh to the satisfaction of the town engineer and approved by the commission at future hearing.
Uh, just hold on. Let's just add to that, that it's, it is to be an application, a future application for the swale to the commission.
Then um a deep permit is required that confirming that the first application is part of the second application, if I got that right. I'm sure Donna, you can correct that.
We could take it out if it's been officially done, right?
Right. Then we had, we are allowed to have access to all fill information that they develop and get approved a dust mitigation plan. If it's not already in the plan, we could take it out. Or if it is in the plan, we can take it out. In the last.
Take out the the condition, you mean?
Correct.
You could take out. Yeah, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to have to, some of those items that are, we're not sure whether they're there or not, we're obviously going to eliminate them from the this draft, right?
Uh. We could put them in with a conditional qualifier. I don't want to lose them.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is they're going to be in the draft. But if we find out that they're already included in the application, we don't have to make conditions that are already in the application, right?
Doesn't.
Right. So we have to check that some of these things that we're questioning, whether if they're already there, we, you know. But we're, we're getting all the things written down, so we know what we have to check and what we have to expand on.
Right. And the last thing I had was that the material on the top of the liner needs to be natural material. And that one, that may be in the plan, I, but we'll have to research that too.
I I remember them talking about it. It was going to be natural material.
Yeah, we just need to confirm, I think. Lois, did you have any other items that you captured?
No, BJ, BJ, I think you got it pretty much.
BJ, you talked about the dust control.
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Dust mitigation plan, if it's.
There you go. So I'm going to resecond my second.
All right, we have a second uh from Commissioner Stewart from Commissioners Hall. It's a pro, uh, motion to draft the letter of approval with said conditions. Um, do we all in favor?
All right.
Um, that's for all opposed. One opposition, uh, no extension. So the motion passes four to one. And so I think we have to, uh, a, a, you know, might be helpful is if before you, before you get, I know you probably have a ton of stuff going on. But maybe if if you could just send an email out of all those items from Commissioner Hall's uh, conditions list, so that we have those and we can all, you know, sit on them for a week or so and and just so we know which, you know, we don't lose it, we didn't all write it down exactly the same way.
Yeah, actually, if they, Commissioner Hall, if you could email me your list so that I can make sure that I'm.
Or that way too.
Yeah.
Or that way, sorry too.
And then, yes, and then what I can do is um give you guys a list of those things.
Forward it to everybody, or no, that doesn't make sense. But anyway, either way, so that we could all look at it.
Lois, too, if there's anything conditions that you see.
Yeah, I will send that to you, Donna, for distribution and managing comments. It'll help me organize this a little bit.
Yeah, we might have different ways of helping on the wording too.
Yes.
Okay, so um. So we're all.
Conditions is what I have.
Eight?
Eight. Should be manageable.
So now we have, getting back onto the agenda here, administrative review enforcement issues, none. Seventeen status updates, none. Minutes. Minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty one.
Sorry. Donna, I had sent you that revised copy. There was a copy that was pretty much dramatically revised, just mostly additions. Um, but I thought it was too much to try to read into the record.
That's fine, yeah.
I suggested to Donna that she send you the revised copy and that we vote on that copy next time.
Yes, because I did not get to that yet.
I I didn't expect you to. So if that's okay with everybody, we'll table it for yet another meeting.
Is that the only outstanding minutes we have?
No, we have the twenty third also.
Now we have June twenty third.
Yeah.
Which I also would like to table. I've gotten through most of them, but I have not had a chance to listen to the entire um, recording again, and since we did have quite a lively discussion about what was and was not mentioned at that meeting, I thought it's a good idea that I have it pretty well set before we put it down into minutes.
Okay, all right, so no minutes to be approved tonight. Regulation Amendment Committee.
Um, no, if we haven't done anything more on it, we have all those regulations that we discussed and we, I think we approved them too, but we just have to go to the next step.
I have not, yes.
I have not. Oh, poor Donna.
Yeah. All the outreach?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, correspondence received from CTDP, permit application for use of pesticide and state orders. Um, all right, so you guys can go back to uh block E.
And before you leave, though, Keith, we we got one oh one and one sixty three or one sixty, whatever it is, Barn Hill Road.
Oh, right, sorry. Um, that's under.
We can do that under, right, I am E number eleven.
Okay, well, let's get into that and we'll start with that and then I'll leave. Oh, the other thing too. What's now the deal with being in back in chambers? Who wanted to?
They are having hybrid meetings now where the commission is meeting in person. Um, the public can come, but they're also being, but they're also being done online too. So it's, um, but it's not mandatory yet. There there are still commissions that are just meeting remotely. Um, it's up to the commission on what they want to do.
And we have an extension on the uh remote meetings through the state for how much longer?
I don't have a a timeframe on that. Um, I just know that there, it's not mandatory to go back in person.
Okay.
So have they fixed the air conditioning in the chamber?
Yes, they did.
That would be a condition for me.
Let me tell you, those workdays were long, but anyway.
So I just wanted to bring it up, see if everybody thought about it at this point. Um, you know, we do have the option.
Well, with the resurgence of this this new variant and it's getting worse and worse all the time, I'm not sure it's a good idea to go back to in-person meetings just yet.
I I would agree. I'm I'm in no hurry to go. I, I would agree. I'm, I'm in no hurry to go.
No, as long as we're allowed to, I'm happy to be remote.
We've just got one more meeting for the summer, right? And then we're back on the regular schedule.
Yep.
Maybe we discuss it at the next meeting?
Sounds good. It's a month away.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so the one oh one Barn Hill. Joe, are you there?
Yes, I am, Donna. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, yep.
Um, and I don't think I have anything from that. Let me see.
You want, you want me to just give a little introduction?
Yes, go right ahead.
We, we had this before the commission. This is the, the nursery that replaced Plumbley Nursery. They wanted to clear along the road and then clear some dead and dying trees. Inside the, the stone wall, which ran parallel to the road. Um, with the intent of planting. Uh, trees for growth and resale, plant them and, and remove them. We had them for a, a number of sessions and then they withdrew their. Uh, application. And subsequent to that. I was driving by there and I noticed that they had clear cut everything behind the stone wall. And, uh, the culvert was running into a pile of, uh, fallen trees that was the actual wetland stream. And they had completely stripped the, alongside the road. Uh, and planted some, some small bushes. So I brought it to Donna and Joe's attention that it was a possible violation since they had withdrawn it. Subsequently, uh, I think Donna or Joe dug up that they had received a. Permit and Donna, you probably need to describe what that permit was. To.
It was a, um. It was a permitted use as of right, because I guess what they had originally described. The commission had said, okay, yeah, we can do an IPU for that. Um, which they, I guess subsequently took and ran with.
It was to remove dead and dying trees.
Right, that's all that was on there.
And they clear cut everything all the way up to their buildings, probably have more than an acre of clearing there. So the question, is that a violation?
Did you take any pictures, BJ?
I did. I sent them to Donna.
Yes, and I do not have them on here.
Joe did have a picture the other day that they had, they had moved. Stone, a stone channel, so they had done some improvement.
Yes. I, I, I've gone out to the site, uh, three times so far.
Can you?
To look at it and took photographs.
Do, um, I don't have it on here. What I'll have to do is. Bring them, put them on for the next meeting. I only have. The previous ones, not anything new.
Maybe that's we best table it till then.
Yeah. Because I don't have those, the Joe's new photos or your, your photos on here. I apologize for that.
Well, there was a very large pile of trees and they were clearly green, healthy trees that had been. Cut down and piled up, so they went beyond the scope of their permitted use.
And we do, we're talking about the farm permitted use?
I believe that's what they were claiming, yes.
Well, there's obviously the, all the public acts are, I think, pretty clear. As to what, you know, descriptions of what's allowed and not allowed when you have. Man, I don't know if they're historically a farm, if they're PA four nine, what is it, four seventy, four ninety? I don't know, forestry, there's a whole bunch of different things that regulate what they can do. I would think that they're in just as much trouble with them. If, I think it supersedes us too, right? They're like. They don't.
It was a stream right down the middle, so it's clear wetland violation.
They are permitted to do certain things as of right, as long as they come to us for a, for a declaratory ruling. Which we did sort of, except that they went way beyond. What they were supposed to have done and what they said they were going to do. Now, if you look at section four, which is the permitted uses as of right. One of the things that is permitted. Is clear cutting of timber, except for this expansion of agricultural cropland. So you're not allowed to clear cut timber unless you're expanding agricultural cropland. Which would have, my interpretation of that would be that they would have had to have a plot that was right next to that. That they were already farming something on that they were extending to or from.
Joe, was that replanted?
Excuse me?
It has not been, it has not been replanted now. I think they would probably make the argument. That the property adjacent to that roughly one acre is indeed being used for storage of growing plants.
Is that a crop? You know, I guess you get into semantics here. That was one of the.
Well.
Questions we, but we did at the khaki wig things where the lawyer stands up and says, well, you guys got to make your own decisions. On what you consider a crop and what you don't consider a crop.
And you're probably, there's definitely two schools of thought about that and. That's why above my pay grade, as they say, uh, you know, traditionally, if I say a crop, it certainly grows out of the ground. Nursery people contend that, no, it's, they bring in and grow for shipment. So, you know, that's, so I certainly would, I, I, I couldn't decide as to whether that's a crop or not.
Tough one, except there's still.
You're saying it's all stuff growing. Well, we're talking about nursery stock that's been already packaged for sale?
Right, well, typically what any of the nurseries in town do is that they bring in. Small plants and let them go to maturity and then sell them. So they.
Growing in the ground? Are they growing in the ground or are they growing in a container?
Typically, they're growing in a container.
So I don't think that's farming. I think that is, that is nursery. Right? Farming is the growing in the soil. But anyways, I look at it this way. They came and they're a farm, right? New owners of a farm. I'm sure that when they bought this property. That they had their attorneys explain, if they didn't already know. What their rights are as farm owners and what farms are allowed to do. They came to us, said, this is what we want to do, and then they withdrew as if they weren't going to do nothing, right? Is that what happened? They basically said, F the wetlands commission, we're going to do our own thing. We don't care. That's the way I look at it. Now, could they have gotten some bad information from somebody else that said? Look, you don't need to do wetlands for this. This is totally within your rights. We, we, it, it's. That would have to be something proved to us where, yeah, okay, they. But clearly, there's got to be somebody that can square this up for us. I mean, there's the whole, I mean, I know like when I. When I tried to, I'm trying to put some, some large piece of land at the forestry. I had to hire or I have to hire a state certified forester to come out and. And, and certify that it's actual forest and they know what's. Able to be done. I actually read it up on myself. I, I, I know now. I have to reference the numbers, but I know what you have to do as far as the amount of trees you need and what size. To have an acre of land be considered a forest. I think there's a bunch of regulations for the same thing for farming. You know, it's just not go do whatever you want and drive the John Deere silly all over the place. There's got to be rules. So whether they clearly identified to themselves that the rules, you know, the way that they're within their rules, that's what we have to do. And this is a hard one to like. To, to, there's, there is going to be no, uh, oh, oops, we didn't know. They were from us.
I know, but what do we do?
Guess the question is what happens if someone has a farm classification and it comes into question whether they're. They're operating properly as a farm.
I don't think they actually need a farm classification because of the definition that the state, if you look in the back of your regs. There is an, uh, definition of agriculture and farming. And it's long, it's lengthy, it's, um. Involved and it's long, it's, it's big. It includes just about everything. Um. The agriculture and farming, they don't say you have to be designated as a farm.
Okay.
And.
It makes it even harder.
It does. It makes it extremely hard.
Harder for them because if you farms have a certain amount of freedoms. They weren't hit with much of the regulation down the line because. They had historic practices and they were producing food. So it's like, how much are you going to restrict them? But. I don't know. I mean, we don't have enough probably in the area to, to know even who to call in this situation.
Well, we've had plenty of problems, but we haven't had any. Place to go with, you know, for advice. It's been an extremely frustrating.
I mean, our, our one option is. Hit them with a notice. It's explaining all the things we're just talking about. And say, um, you know, appear before us or. You know, or, or, or what's the word?
Well, actually, you've got, there's a good point there. I think if we ask them to. Appear in front of that and explain their justification for doing what they did. Then we'd have a much better idea of what grounds they're standing.
Right. They, someone, you know, we'll put the weight on them. Here's the violation. Come in to explain us what authority. Other than us gave you permission to act in this behavior on the property. That's what we have to do. Ask them what authority granted them the right. To do the actions that they did.
I think this, yep.
Even if what they did permitted as of right, they still had to come in front of us for a declaratory ruling. We tell them, yes, this is, this is, you know, it's an as of right or no.
But again, the authority is going to at least get us to start somewhere.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it becomes a different situation depending on what authority, the farm, you know, if they're, the authority of the farm, whatever it is, says, oh, yeah, this is. This is acceptable, but you do have to get wetlands permission as far as maybe for methodologies and rogerio, whatever. Then it becomes, okay. We could have let you do this. Let's go back, let's see what, let's now make sure that. You know, the stipulations are put in place so that we're, we're happy with the result. But they have to, we, we, like, we didn't know at the time when they talked to us. We're kind of, we don't know what farms, you know, what, what rights farmers have. It's not our thing. But we have to ask, now that we have the violation, go with their feet to the fire and say, what authority? You know, granted you permission. Whether they needed a second permission or not, but what authority gave you the permission to do this work in the first place? They can't come up with an answer, then. We, you know, they're in.
I got a bigger problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Always on that.
All right, let, let's send them a, so we're talking about sending them an N O visa?
I think that would be the question. We need to open a line of communication with them and we need to at least send them a letter saying that. You know, you appeared before us, you withdrew. You went ahead and took this action. On what grounds do you, have you, have you proceeded with this? What gave you the authorization to do this?
I wonder if there's, um, I know that if an applicant extends. Work past the permitted. Amount, I'm not, I'm not saying that well, but if the, um. I know we can rescind a permit if they go, if the extent of their work goes beyond what was allowed. There, we have a whole list of things that we're allowed to do. When it comes to permitted use as of right, I'm not sure if we have to. If, if they went beyond what they're allowed to do, do we have to permit after the fact? Would it still make them go through the permit process? Or we have to figure that one out once we get to that point?
Yeah, that's what the, that's what the request is going to be. It's going to, you know, they may come back and say, we found this old, you know. Wetlands decision back from twenty years ago that this falls under. We're just, what authority, what? What authority, whether it's a documentation or a permit or anything. Allowed you, you know, was, gave you the permission to, to do what you did.
Mm-hmm.
They come up with, they have to go, if they don't come up with anything, then we start like, you know, we do it anybody else.
Sounds like a good.
Feet to the fire.
Okay.
All right, so. This point, I think everything else is done. I can go, Lois, you could finish up.
Okey dokey. Bye Keith, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Everyone, Chairman's leaving at nine thirty two P M.
Okay. Um.
We'll have a quorum if Keith leaves.
I'm sorry?
Do we still have a quorum if Keith leaves?
Yes.
Okay.
It's four of us. So the next one is, um, the, the question of four Main Street seventeen, seventy fifteen, whatever than four Main Street. Um, we had been asked. Months ago to go and look at the property. I don't know how much you remember, we remember, but Denise had asked us to go because they had asked to change. The numbers of plants and the sizes of plants and even the types of plants, I believe, and she said. They put these things out there. She thought they looked really puny and she wanted our opinion on it. And then. Between the quarry and everything else and Denise leaving and all of the upheavals, upheavals, it fell through the cracks. So we never did actually come back and tell them, tell anybody. What we thought about what they did as a remediation. So then I wanted to bring that up now. Uh, I know I walked it by myself. I walked it with BJ and I walked it with Ross. Um.
Now, I know Joe just went out there because they did a bond release request and I do have Denise's photos from. April. I don't know. So you got a, okay, so you got a bond release request also.
Yes, so I guess that these two go together, I think, because. Um. It was interesting when I walked out there the first time, I was able to see all the plantings because nothing else had come in yet. And there was about, oh, I don't know, maybe eight inches of mulch around each plant, wood chips. The next time I went out, it was with BJ. And BJ, can you recall what you remember seeing of it?
Well, I think the, the, the plantings that we could identify looked pretty puny. They were small and did not look healthy. Uh, there was, as you said, a very limited amount of mulch around them. And then they had sprayed, they'd hydro seeded. But it was too early. That had not started to come in yet, so. I don't know what the site looks like today.
Okay, so the, after that, about two weeks, maybe, I walked it with Ross and. Um, I was amazed. Because the invasives are everywhere. You, you can't even find the plants anymore. They are completely dwarfed by Japanese knotwood. By, um. Mugwort, which is another real goodie. And, um, I don't know what, I don't know all of my plants. I just know a couple of them. And if there, anything ever came out of the hydro seeding, I have no idea. But one of the things that Ross mentioned to me when he was looking was that he didn't see any silk fence around the, the piles of. I'm going to call them dirt. I don't know what they actually are. Because they didn't look like dirt. There's the wrong color. So I don't know if they're processing or what they were doing there, but they were right up there with, these piles were right up to the wetlands. And there was no silk fence. There was nothing to prevent any. Any spillage into the wetlands. Um, so, and yet Joe's. So, and yet Joe's talking about, he was saying that silt fence needed to be removed. So I'm a little curious as to what section he actually, did he walk all the way back to Five Victoria? Which is where some of the remed, I'm sorry, he left. I'm sorry, Joe, there you are. Did you walk all the way back? What did you see?
I, I walked back to the, they're, they're excavating in areas behind the buildings there. There are several piles that appeared to me to be far enough away from the, from where those plantings are. So it wasn't really, I wasn't worried about material sloping off those piles and filling the wetlands back in again. The piles that are there, when I was, I was out there with Mitch and, because I went to see him first. I said, I'm here to take a look at this. You know, I've got a bond request. And so he said, the material is there, we're pulling out of these hole, I mean, some of the silvery substantial holes back there that they're in the process of cleaning up. And you can still see that there's a lot of debris in these holes. You can see pieces of metal poking out the sidewalls of the holes. There's fabric. There's all kinds of garbage in these things. And we're pulling the material out of there according to him, screening it and sipping, which I think is one reason why those piles look as dark as they do. There's a lot of old stuff in there and I think what you've got is a combination of organics. You've got a combination of crushed rock. There's undoubtedly some asphalt in there. You know, that whole area acted as a dump for a long time, obviously. So they're taking the stuff out of there and sifting through it and putting it either in separate piles or screening it to get what's usable out of there for use on the property. Whether or not they're actually importing material, I can't tell because nobody's there often enough to be able to see vehicles, whether they're coming in or out. I don't know whether they're exporting anything because again, nobody's there often enough to be able to see if their trucks filling and leaving. So I can only take his word for it at this point that they are taking the materials on the property, screening it, stockpiling it and using it. They're supposed to be using it again on that property. As I walked back towards the, which would be the tail end of where the excavation is, I could see that there were certainly some plantings back in there. You could see the little tags on them. You could see they were planting at irregular, they were planted at regular intervals. There was some grass going up in irregular locations. Nothing like you see certainly in a lawn. It certainly appeared to me to be some of the plants were, looked like they were in decent condition. Other ones looked like they needed some watering, some attention. There were some of them that were dead. That were in the minority as to what was out there. There was certainly a lot of stuff growing in that area there. Certainly some was invasive. I think it's kind of keeping in, in what you've got in the surrounding areas. Unfortunately, the area that's around that is pretty much untouched. They never went back there with anything because there was no need to. It's just essentially what's, what you've got going on. It was creep moving forward towards the areas that they either don't work in or were supposed to be remediating. It's certainly never going to look like, it's never gonna look like what we'd like it to look like because it's impossible to maintain it that way. I know everybody would like to say, oh, yeah, they're gonna maintain it. But honestly, once we give any kind of an okay to proceed with that, it's gonna, it's gonna, the natural state is gonna take over. And I think we all know unfortunately that the monitoring periods fall by the wayside because there's nothing that forces them to provide the records. I can think of other locations in town that have got a three-year monitoring on it and after the first one, it just disappears because it falls off the radar. You know, again, it'd be nice if it, if that happened the way we'd like it to happen, but the reality of it, the reality of it is it just doesn't. So you could make of that as it, as you'd like, but that's what I've seen over my 10 years in town. And I know that we'd all like to, you know, impose these conditions. You have monitoring. They give us a report, but rarely do we get anything beyond the first year. So what do we do about that? I just don't know. It'd be nice if we could set up kind of a system where we guarantee that, but it almost depends on the will of the, of the property owner to provide those things to us. So whether we get them or not is totally up in the air.
Yeah. I will say that usually it's the bigger projects that the monitoring reports do come in on, but the smaller ones, you're right, it's very difficult, especially even for homeowners. A lot of them forget or don't know. I will say this. I got an email from Rick who spoke to Hans Sherman's, who was the project manager, I guess, on that. And he addressed the concern of erosion control at the temporary stockpiles and
And I understand from Rick's conversation that they would be putting silt fence around those piles.
Right. So he said, a six-foot, three-to-one slope berm has been constructed to protect wetlands from potential runoff. Silt fencing and silt socks remain in place at the wetland borders from previous remediation efforts to mitigate material intrusion. The stockpiled material is to be used for site retention ponds and will be removed for that purpose shortly.
Say that again about the, the stockpiles?
The stockpiled material is to be used for site retention ponds and will be removed for that purpose shortly.
Oh. So it's asphalt and stuff like that and you're using that in a detention basis? That can't be good.
Well, I, I'm sure, I don't, I don't know if we're talking about asphalt here.
Yeah. No.
I'm dreaming. Okay.
It's okay.
Oh, I know. It looked like asphalt because it was so black. That's what it was. Like crushed asphalt. That's what I was thinking. Okay. Joe, did you notice whether or not the detention ponds that's supposed to be on the Monroe side were completed? They were not anywhere near completed when I was back there.
No, it seemed to me that the whole site is still in flux. They're working their way back out of the rear of the property. And they're nowhere, they certainly haven't done, finished with the excavation that they've been working on as far as cleaning up the, the garbage to send the ground. You know, that open hole there still has a lot of debris poking out of the sidewalls of that hole.
So should we be releasing a bond when there's still so much to do?
I think it might be fair to release a portion of the bond. I think that if we were to look at it percentage-wise, I think we should get a report. I think that, I think the, the fair thing to do would be to get a report from, if, if this Hans fellow is a fellow who's, who's their project manager. He should be able to tell us, we are X percentage done with this project at this point and we still have X amount of work to do and list what still has to be done versus what has been done. And we could base a bond, a partial bond release on whatever that proportion value is. Because obviously they have done some of it.
Would there be, and I'm asking the rest of the commission, any value to having another evaluation of the plantings? Normally, we require from year to year that at least we have 80% survival. Now, if we're starting off with less than 50% survival for the first year, we don't have a prayer of anything else happening. Do we need to start and do at least a monitor before we release this bond? Do we need to find out that what they did put in is still alive?
I think we should. I'm with you on that one.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
If they have to replace plantings, that should, the bond should be protective in that case.
I think the only thing they could do would be widespread herbicides. Actually, there's so many invasives back there. I don't know. But they can't. There's so much standing water that that would be just, and it's right next to the Great, not Great Hollow Lake, the other lake that's outside of Swiss Army. Jim, what's your opinion on that?
On the herbicides? I think that you're right. See what's there and, and, and get a report on it and then decide.
Okay. All right. So then that's unanimous. We would all like to see a newer, new report?
Yes.
Who will be the right person to get to give this report?
Who's the current soil scientist on that project?
I've got a clue.
Yeah, I mean, this guy is not, it doesn't list him as a soils. It just says planning, architecture and project management.
Okay, okay.
So we need some kind of a professional though. They can't send out the, the mail clerk.
Exactly. My point, yes. Again, they need to have a third party look at this and tell us, okay, this is what's there and that's what's not there. This is what's growing. That's what's not growing. This has, these invasives have taken over. They have to be remediated. I think that's, you know, this is something that if you're looking at something of this size, you're looking at, I mean, I think the bond is what, 33, 35,000?
33,000.
All right. So we obviously would like to get as much of that back as we can. The shortest path to do that is to get somebody out there to tell us exactly what is out there and what else has to be done in order to release as much of this bond as we can.
Okay. So if we're gonna need a third-party bond, that means that, I mean, a third-party professional, that means that the staff has to get involved in getting somebody in. Or we can ask the applicant to get his own person and that's what we've usually been doing.
Which I think is fine. This, this is not the quarry. This is a much smaller project.
Right. Thank goodness.
Yeah, yeah. So the applicant has got a, got a guy on, someone they know or someone that their engineer knows or whoever. Doesn't really matter. But it's theirs, it's their stamp that they're responsible for. So let them tell us what's going on.
Okay. So I, I've said, I shouldn't be an engineer because that, that, that person is not considered a qualified professional. No offense, Jim. I, I'm thinking that it, it should be a landscape architect. It should be a wetland biologist, perhaps. It, anybody else have any ideas on this? So what kind of professional we want to have out there? Don't all speak at once.
I think you hit the two. Wetlands biologists.
Or soil scientists.
Or a landscape, a licensed landscape architect.
From Northeast Conservation District.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Yeah, we, we used to use, I remember Donna and I used to use somebody from the Northeast Conservation District.
Well, we'd be Southwest.
Yeah, we're different.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, but somebody like that would work.
Yeah.
If we're asking Hans to do this, he could choose whoever he wants, actually.
Yeah, yep.
Yes.
But we, we can just ask him to provide that report. Okay. Donna, can I ask you to do that?
Want to do a motion whether the bond is going to be released or denied, the request?
I make a motion that we deny the request to reduce, to release the bond. A second.
Okay. Motion by Clark, seconded by BJ. All in favor? Okay, all of that's unanimous. And so that is pending a report from a professional on the status of the plantings as well as the invasives. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And also completion of the overall project?
I'm sorry?
And completion of remediation?
Completion of the project.
Well, that wouldn't be the, that wouldn't be that wetlands person though. That would be somebody different.
Yes, yes, it would be some, but as far as the bond is considered, we had first
That's usually where Joe would fit in. Because Joe would be able to determine the completion of the project. This make, this one's a little more technical because half of it's in Trumbull and half of it's in Monroe. And we're only in charge of the Monroe half. So Joe, would you, is that something that falls under your jurisdiction or is that gotta be somebody else?
As, as far as, you mean, working, working with the trouble under it or, or the, or the completion of the project?
Completion of the project as far as Monroe is concerned.
I think that would be something under us because that's, that almost becomes more of a zoning issue because clearly we'd all like to have a much better idea of whether it's going to be wrapped up enough so they can either continue the work or stop work and stabilize the whole thing.
Okay.
So I think that I could talk to the property owner, I think, relatively easily. At least get some kind of an answer.
Okay. So we'll look forward to hearing from something from, for next meeting. So Donna, can you make sure that that ends up on the agenda again?
Yes.
Thank you. And can you also send a letter to them requesting this third-party, not thirty, but the, the professional report?
Yes.
Thank you. I know in between all your, your Okay, does, are there any petitions from commissioners? Anything else we need to talk about?
Close the meeting.
Do I hear a second? Okay, BJ seconds. Clark was the first. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.